Okay, I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order for Monday, January 29th, it is 5:30, and this is the first in a series of budget-related meetings we're going to have that will allow us to walk through the proposed budgets and the town administrator budget that Kate is proposing in some detail. We have a list of budget topics that we'll be covering each night. I won't read through the pull list of ones we're talking about today or this evening, but we will get to them in due course. The point of this discussion is to hear Kate and Jen talk about the budgets in some detail, answer our questions, and certainly if members of the audience have questions, we can do that as well. But hopefully, we'll get through this in an expeditious manner, and we look forward to engaging with you guys. Kate?
Okay. Well, last week, I sent out to the members of the board an overview, but I will run through a little bit of that for those who didn't get that. So, the budget is, the proposed budget is up almost 5.6%. It's high, and higher than I would like, but I believe the areas where I'm proposing the new spending, they're necessary to meet the demands of the public, the demands of legislation that we have to address, good government and some of its decisions that we made in prior years. In full, the budget's up just over 5%. That includes 3.35% reduction in debt service, 4.16% increase in library operations, and I don't take credit or responsibility for those increases, 16.75% increase in risk management employee benefits. That's one of the things driving up that overall cost. Some of the major changes in the proposal that I want to highlight, the police office, the police department asked for the 53rd officer. If you remember, last year, they had asked for two new officers. You approved one officer, number 52, to start on January 1 of this year. They've asked for the 53rd again. The proposal has it starting on January 1. And we'll talk about that when we get there, but a lot of that is around, realistically, can they get somebody onboard sooner, and what can we afford to do? This budget includes a full year salary for that 52nd police officer and sanitarian that started just a few days ago. The premium increase for medical insurance is currently estimated at 21%. Our broker is negotiating the rate, and if necessary, will market the insurance. Salary contingency account contains funding for settlement of union contracts. The town fall union contract expires on June 30th of this year. They are actually splitting into two unions. The dispatchers will be separate and distinct unions, so you have money in there for settlements of those contracts and non-revenue pieces. The value of the accrued leave redemption account has increased. It's anticipating a significant retirement payout in fiscal '25, and it also includes the police, the second year of the police, 6 to 457 contribution plan.
Where is that, Kate?
It's in the contingencies. I'm sorry, that's in the employee benefits area.
Okay.
There are significant rate increases anticipated in utilities. The solid waste disposal contract is under negotiation. That is a significant increase in the budget. There are 26.1 pay periods this year versus 26 last year, which actually comes at a cost of $63,000. Then, there's $25,000 in the human resources budget to hire a consultant to conduct a search for new town administrator. I will be retiring in September of '25, so...
September 21, '25?
September 1.
Oh, 2025.
September 1, '25.
But you had another 100 years to go.
No, I have my plans in place. So, if you want to hire a consultant, the search should begin during fiscal '25. It obviously would continue into fiscal '26, but, so anyway, I put money in there if you want to hire a consultant. There's increased funding for parks and rec beautification and invasive removal initiatives. There are increased expenses in the fire departments. There was Connecticut statewide model plan maintenance and remediation of toxic substances on turnout gear required by Public Act 22139. So, that has to do with requiring that they regularly clean the gear, whether they've been places or not. And then additional training they've asked for to prepare for responses in the new developments, specifically elevator.
I was in a meeting today where they were talking about this contamination. It's this PFOS contamination, which is one of these forever chemicals, and the concentration standard is something like four parts per trillion. I mean, it really is very, very small. To put that in context, it's a drop in five Olympic-sized swimming pools. That's what we're talking about, that they're worried about removing. But it extends not just in sort of protective gear for firefighters, but also water supply and all of that. But it's getting a lot of attention at the state and federal level. It's a problem.
The last one I wanted to highlight was increased costs due to early voting requirements. Some of the things that I didn't fund, the human services director asked to convert two part-time administrators to one full-time position. I do think that it would make them more efficient, but I couldn't, it was actually the last thing I cut. Just couldn't justify the increase in the cost by going to a full-time. When you add those benefits on, it increases the cost of the positions dramatically. The emergency management director had asked for a paid part-time assistant director. We currently have a volunteer director, so I did not fund that. The Mather Homes dead asked for a grant of $50,000. We've never funded them before, and my feeling was their justification was not supported. It's not a municipal use, so I did not fund that. Although, I did fund increases in the parks and rec beautification and invasive removal initiatives, not as much as they wanted. And same thing with beautification. They requested 30% increase in the budget, and I couldn't support that full. On the revenue side, non-tax revenues are up over 10%. A big part of that is investment income. What I would caution is against too much reliance on this level of investment income on a permanent basis, because we're looking at, you know, $3 million estimated revenue next year. If that drops off, that's a big hole to fill. So, we've got to think very carefully about how to deal with that.
That $3 million reflects a decrease from what we're going to see this year.
Yes, Joan has, yeah, she's assumed some Fed rate cuts.
Right.
Solid waste revenues are up, parking revenues are up, building permit revenues are up, but we are near the end of the current redevelopment cycle, so I would expect that that will drop off. So, you know my, what I tell you every year. This is your plan to meet the goals and objectives of the Board of Selectmen, to plan for the services that we're going to provide and how to deliver them, and the decisions you make aren't always monetary. Some of them are policy, and you, my feeling is, I've highlighted some of the things that I cut, but what you should be focusing on is what's in there. We do have growth in the grand list, not just from the revaluation, but I don't feel, you know, we know the grand list has grown, and there's revenue from that, and there's revenue from the increased income, but to me, increased revenue is not a justification for increased spending. So, I looked at the budget, the spending budget, independent of the revenue.
Yeah, if you wanted to highlight or see the difference of that, I mean, the change in grand list should be irrelevant in terms of spending decisions we make, but one comparison you could do is to say, "Look, the taxes look like this, but because the grand list actually went up in value," right, "it's spread out over these now commercial properties and other things that were not part of the grand list before." And so, you could say, for example, "Just because of development or because of these additions, the taxes might be less than what you'd pay otherwise."
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. So, Jen has the, no, go back.
When do you want us to ask questions?
Anytime, that's, yeah. Just, you know, when you look at the front page, the overview, you see the proposed revenues. This is the non-tax, so not the current property tax. It does include, like, motor vehicle supplemental or prior taxes, but that's the 13 million revenues. And if you scroll down a little bit, you can see the, you know, graphically the difference. I just think you all should, you know, when you're going in here, take a look at these things, because there are other graphs that break out the expenses, and you can actually drill down on some things in there. It's worth taking a look at.
This will show you breakdown by personnel versus contractual services, debt service over the years.
Okay, so, let's dive into Board of Selectmen. So, in case you didn't know, on the left-hand side of the screen, you can always take a look at, and it shows you for each department, it'll show you the revenues and the expenditures in total for that department. So, you get to see a little summary. So, we look at the expenses. There's not, not a lot of change here. Okay. I think the biggest increase in here is in the salaries. That is reflective of the salary that the Board of Finance approved last year for the new term. Going down a little bit in travel, professional services, we'd had funds in here in the years past for Think Smart, or, you know, the Slow Down in Town campaign. I've communicated to the police department that if they want to continue that program, that it should be all within their control, shouldn't be funded out of the Board of Selectmen budget. So, it's really up to the police commission if they want to continue that. So, that's what decreases there in that account. And I think that's really, don't want to offend you all, but this is a rather boring budget.
Questions on this budget? Okay, next?
Okay, next is the town administrative budget.
A vastly more exciting budget.
Well, not really, no. There are two pieces to it, and I don't think I generate any revenue either. So, town administrator expense, that covers my salary and 25% of one of the administrative secretaries in our office. Little bit of decreases, because the only increase is in the salary, and then shaved a little bit off the other accounts based on actuals, actual spending. The other part of that budget is the support services. This is where we have our, the full-time salary is the general fund's share of the receptionist. She's the parking administrator, so the bulk of her salary is charged to the parking fund. You see the TV79 operators. Professional services, cutting that a bit. What did I take out? Oh, okay, so you'll see down below, copier equipment in increase. We consolidated our copier leases with our printers, so one company is servicing them all, and all the costs are now consolidated under here.
Was there savings on that?
Overall, there's a savings, yeah.
Okay.
Townwide. And then, we pay for the mailing out of here. So, and advertising is up a bit. That is, we pay for the advertising, the bids, and just based on what we're seeing historically, those costs are going up. Someday, it'd be nice if we didn't have to post it in newspapers anymore. I'm not even sure how much response we get from the newspapers. I think the majority of what we get is from it being posted on our website or on the state's website, but the law still says we have to go there, so.
Yeah, this was discussed last year, so maybe they'll bring it up again.
Yeah, I think the newspapers always argue against it. I think it's a good source of kind of, you know. And we are kind of, we only have one that we can use. So, you know, the alternative, the Stanford paper, is far more expensive, so that's where that is.
Do you not pay any maintenance and professional services? Why are you down to 6200?
I think that was, no, we are paying, the printer maintenance contract.
Okay.
That has been, the cost of the printer maintenance is now in with the copiers.
Okay.
Okay, so we just have to pay the income.
Okay.
Are you next?
HR.
HR, sorry, HR.
Wait, Kate, go back to that one. So, on revenue?
I don't, oh, well, there'd be the parking.
Yeah, that's a big jump. Is that because we have full time now?
That's, we're...
Parking tickets?
It's, yeah, we're doing a much more serious job with the parking tickets. So, I actually looked at the, you know, what were we generating now, and that's why it's been increased. Remember, we also, effective this year, went up to $5 for the daily and 450. Well, that wouldn't impact the parking ticket stuff, but...
But we have, the ranger came on.
We now have two full-time rangers, and they are...
Giving tickets.
Giving tickets.
Got it.
Yes.
I should share that part of the budget. Their community.
Well, how much do we want to tell them when we... So, HR, this is the HR director and the other percentage of our admin in the salary line. The travel, it looks like a big percentage, but it's only $75. She has asked, the HR director has asked to be able to take her assistant to some of the Connecticut HR Association classes with her, which I think is a really benefit for the town. So, you'll see an increase in the conference meeting line. Professional services, this is where the money for a consultant is. We reached out to the company that had done our compensation study, and they had also recently done a study for another, or a search for another town. So, they shared with us the quote and the expenses for the other town, so that's how I came up with the number. We have used a search firm in the past at least once to hire a town administrator, and at least twice, not. So, I think it's your call, what you guys want to do.
I think it's not outrageous. Industry standards is usually three months' salary.
Yeah, government, as always, government's a little bit different.
Yeah.
So, it's just a flat fee, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we can reflect on that. I mean, all these budgets are tight, so we're looking for areas to cut or be efficient about everything. Cut's not the right word, I guess. But in this case, it might be worthwhile just talking to some of the URA interview or talk to some of those consultants who write that kind of service. I suspect it's not just candidate identification, but it could be screening, preliminary interviews, kind of all that stuff that they do to help us both sort of determine the characteristics we want in that individual, and then when they do their screening, they'll try to match that person against those characteristics. So, the folks we interview are not, they're pre-screened in the sense that they're tested against those criteria. So, they certainly will earn their keep on that $25,000. It's just a question of whether we would want to undertake that ourselves without the help of a firm like that, so.
Kate, how long of a process is that?
Well, somebody, if you're getting somebody who's already a manager or an administrator, they're going to have to give probably two months' notice, at least, to their current employer. So, if I'm going September, you want somebody identified by July.
And how long does a search typically take?
Well, I don't know. I don't recall the time we did the search, how far in advance we started it. But I think you've got to have it out there in the world for at least four to six weeks, right, and then probably two rounds of interviews, and then the notice period. And actually, references in between, once the selection's made, you're going to take at least a week or so for reference checks and background checks. So, several months.
This is a pretty important job, I think, as we all in this room will attest. So, I kind of don't want to have a rushed process or one where we haven't had a chance to sit back and reflect, both on the characteristics of the person we want, but also the job description itself. I mean, the job description is partly for the candidate, but the real reason I have it is for all of us, just to confirm what we do and importantly, don't want in the role itself, the attributes of the person that's going to take the role, all that kind of thing. My view is that we ought to start this process this summer, right, a year before Kate leaves and retires, just so that we have plenty of time to check those kinds of boxes. I do think we should engage a consultant to do this, just like the consultants we're going to hire for Great Island. They're going to be experts at that process. They'll know what questions to ask. They'll engage us on things like the job description and the attributes of this person, and they'll have ideas or potentially sources of potential candidates that we might not get by just putting it out on the site. They may know of folks who are not actively looking, but who could potentially be persuaded for a job like this. So, my personal view is that the $25,000 would be well spent, and that we should keep this, but that's my view. The actions?
Yeah, no, I agree with that. I mean, I had some experience when we were in the BOA doing, hiring consultants for those, you know, important positions, and I think they add, you know, value, even if the person might already be known to us. Like, sometimes when you hire for these big positions, you know, you've heard of some of these folks, but you really need to do your due diligence on this, and I think it's money well spent.
Okay.
Just one question with regard to the conferences and meetings. Is there an ability to do those online instead of, you know, travels or way to, or does that figure?
Only if they're offered online. These would be, once the Connecticut Association, and then the director going to the National, NPAL, or they call it National Personnel and Labor Relations Association meeting. So, people at the department head level, we try to encourage them to go to their national association conferences. One, you know, and we do have some assistant directors who will attend a similar sort of thing, but, so that money would send the director to the national conference and then to in-state meetings, and we'd like for her assistant to be able to go to the in-state meetings as well. When there are things offered online, you know, we take advantage of it, but they're not always free.
Other comments on human resources?
Hey, Kate, are we going to do capital at one shot, or are you doing something in capital?
I do not, no.
I think you do.
No.
You took it out?
I took it out, yes, yeah.
That's great.
I like that. Keep going. Well, what I thought it was going to cost was nowhere near what we learned it was going to cost. So, there is a slight uptick in medical. These are pre-placement physicals. We're starting to do more of those DOT, CDL, physicals for the Pub Works. People, drug testing for the lifeguards, OSHA testing, that's for the hearing, and then crossing guard testing, vision testing.
Seeing you, Morgan.
Does. Yes, all right.
So, that's not new, crossing guard testing, right? Or is it?
I think it might be.
And it's eyesight, not hearing?
Yes, hearing, yeah. Hearing is the Pub Works crew and Parks and Rec crew that they have to do. Finance department. So, we have some increases and decreases. Jen has proposed increasing the part-time clerk from 15 hours a week to 19 hours a week, which I support. I think it's really helped their office to have the additional staffing. Increased training services. I am a believer in getting training. So, some of these are things from UNICEF that other people can take advantage of in...
Hold on, we've been on.
Let's just repeat later.
We have been on?
Okay. Decrease you see in the professional services, that is taking out the...
Bank fees.
The bank fees, yeah. My little black box, I'm, it won't go away now. So, overall, the budget is not up as much as would have been reflected by the increase in the hours, but if you have any questions on that, Jen's here to answer.
Jen, when did the part-time person start?
October.
October. So, you've had enough time to determine that you need the extra four hours?
Yeah, we were budgeted at 15, and because we got a late start, we've been able to squeak out a couple extra hours each week, and it's really been worthwhile.
How many people are in your retired department, including yourself?
Four full-time and one part-time.
So, we're talking about four and a half people running, basically, if you're running a dollar business, so.
Yeah.
That's one way to look at it.
Our finance department is staffed pretty leanly compared to some of our neighboring communities. Okay. Then, the next one is the Board Finance Audit, and I'm just going to say, it is what it is. That's the price that the auditors have given us.
Do you want to do treasurer?
I thought auditing, auditing came first.
None under those.
Oh, okay, well, all right.
Yeah, I don't like coming on the audit cost. So, in the firm I just retired from, that kind of 10% number, we saw that in multiple firms, and the whole thing is the wages they're having to pay those folks to keep them, and team retention's pretty important, and frankly, this is not unusual at all, so.
And, you know, one of the problems we run into as a government is there are only so many firms that can actually do government auditing and do it well. Sure, there are a lot of people who would, you know, do it, but it's a different animal than corporate.
And is that a one-year contract?
I think it's three-year.
It's a three-year.
So, this will be the second year of the contract.
And do they have the options? We have the option to extend.
We have the option, yep.
Yeah, okay.
But next year, it could be up another 10%. Okay, so it's a three-year with no, with any kind of inflation escalation?
It's set numbers for the first three years. Beyond that, it would be a negotiated increase.
And that, that's just our side of the audit. The Board of Ed pays a portion of the fee, although surprisingly, we pay the larger share because there's actually, even though their budget is bigger, there's more work on our side. Okay, now we'll go back to treasurer, because that was apparently first on my list. That was apparently first on my list. So the treasurer's budget is pretty minimal. It's a salary. And actually, the finance department gets credit for the revenues. Maybe we can go show them the revenue. Yeah, so you can see we're proposed at 3.1, and we're probably going to exceed that this year. You can see where we are. We're ready to... Yeah. We're already at $2 million through December.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that, but the December number include a lag on when we report?
Yes, this was run before the December statements were received.
Okay.
So it's really through November.
Right.
Yeah, we're going to be at $4 million this year. And so if rates are going to moderate a bit, I mean, not to say we're guessing, but $3 million feels a little...
I trust Joan.
It's in the right, what's that?
I said, I trust Joan.
What, don't trust me yet? I haven't looked at her. I haven't looked in the house.
Yeah, he didn't say he trusted you.
No, we are a real problem if you're trusting me. I just, I haven't seen the analysis yet that goes to 3.1, but we'll take a look.
That is attached in the finance department proposal details. Joan prepared a document that walks through her projection.
Okay, I did not see that.
Yeah, and there's lots of good stuff, we're not having highlighted everyone, but there are a lot of good supporting documents attached to each of these budget proposals, so they are worth taking a look at.
Where is it?
It's at the bottom of the finance department.
It is at the bottom.
I'll save this as PDF in a minute, everybody.
Maybe we can come back to this?
Yeah. Just remember, when you open that up, you want to use the back key.
Or you can right-click and open in a new tab.
Oh. I've had to reopen, open gov, you know. Okay.
Yeah, Joan does have a memo on there.
Yeah. Okay. Run over to the assessor?
Sure, is that next one?
Yes. So two sections here, the assessor, and then the board of assessment appeals. Here we have wages up a little bit, part-time salary up a little bit. We do have three certified assessors, so they need to maintain their certification and get certain education, so that's why you're seeing an increase in the conferences and meetings. By having three certified assessors in that office, we do save on the revaluation expense. The other thing I want to highlight here, software maintenance and support, Tony is asking for $8,000 for a new piece of software called NearMap. And this is software that, it's like from a flyover, and it gives an aerial view of properties, but with tremendous detail. And so they can use it to match up what, like, building permits people have had and see, you know, you see a new piece on it, you can see that something happened with, they found patios and decks and things like that that had not, they had not been aware of. So it is a useful tool for them. It can also be used by other departments, such as planning, fire marshal. So I do support adding that piece of software.
Yeah, you talk to those guys, it's not just useful, it's a game changer. I mean, it's extraordinarily detailed and allows them to come in and do comparisons between what's in the records versus what's physically there, almost instantaneous, you know, across a huge number of properties. So it's tax assessors, Public Works could use it.
Yep, Parks Mark, planning and zoning, fire marshal.
Yeah, all of that, so it's super helpful, and a great investment, I think.
Yep.
Now that Tony has the tool to actually assess a penalty, did you put any penalties in the income, or were you waiting to see what the experience is this year?
We did not put anything in the income. I think, you know, I viewed it as, it's a tool that he has.
Right.
I don't think it's a weapon he wants to use.
I fully agree. That's why I was asking whether or not we were waiting to see an in-home auditor.
Informational materials up bit, I mean, dollar amount's not too big, but we're kind of held hostage by the motor vehicle pricing guides. That JD Power just keeps increasing the prices every year, and that's how we price motor vehicles. And we'll talk about motor vehicles. The other section here is the board of assessment appeals. This is primarily overtime for his staff to assist the BAA with their work. It's reduced because it was bumped up this year in the fiscal '24 budget, anticipating additional appeals because of the revow. So we assume that in the second year after the revow, there will be fewer appeals, therefore less need for overtime.
How does the attendance at conferences and meetings relate to their licensing fees?
You need to get a certain number of credits to maintain your certification.
And you get them at, going to conferences and meetings?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Like, I'll tell you, you know, mine, that's where I get the bulk of mine, is by going to the conferences. And the state, UConn runs an assessor school every year, so that's where they try and get to that. Tax collector would be next. So there's not a lot dramatic here. She has one employee who's still working through the steps, which is the reason for the big increase in the full-time salary. And that, and her, that person has also become a certified tax collector, so she will be going to conferences and meetings with Kathy. And that's a good thing for us to have, because with the tax collector being an elective position, anytime you get a new person coming in, they're not going to be certified in all likelihoods. So it's great to have somebody on staff who's a certified tax collector. Office supplies, it looks like, percentage-wise, it's going up a lot, but they're buying new credit card, oh, I'm sorry, no, they're replacing a whole plating machine, I guess that was the reason. What I want to talk about here on their revenues, we're going to need to take a look at one of them. I just noticed it this evening before coming in here. Supplemental motor vehicle is showing an increase of $25,000, but we need to take a look at what was billed this year and compare that, assuming there's going to be a decrease in the mill rate. Because motor vehicles don't typically increase in value, they stay pretty stable, so when the mill rate drops, our supplemental motor vehicle will drop. So I think we're going to need to shave about $100,000 to $200,000 off of that number. That's a lot.
That is a lot.
That's a lot.
Yeah, but remember, the grand list went up 29%. So if we assume a near equal, no, it won't, the mill rate will not drop by 29%, just for everybody. But if you assume even a 20% drop in the mill rate on a stable motor vehicle base, that number will go down.
What's the grand list motor vehicle base, do you know?
No, I don't know. And this is supplemental, so this is the thing, the cars that were bought after October 1. So what we need to look at is, what did we bill out this year, and base our estimate for next year on that.
Okay. Yeah, Stanford was running a program, especially since they have more apartments, and as we're getting apartments, that they were driving with a license plate reader to see cars that were not registered in Stanford.
Mm-hmm.
Who were consistently parking there. And so they started to increase their personal property tax by saying, you're rarely living here.
Yeah.
Do we, or participate in having the programs that we're doing?
Well, we haven't talked about doing a plate reader, but we have some pretty aggressive people in the assessor's office and in other places in town, like, you know, there was a house that I drive by every day on my way to work that has an out-of-state plate, and I spoke to them.
It's a Florida plate, I know the house.
And, you know, so if you, you don't have to be registering your car here, but if your car is domiciled here for more than six months, we will charge you personal property tax. It's the same rate as the motor vehicle tax, it's just a different name for it. But we go after them, yeah, and I don't know that we're going to take a plate reader. The other thing that happens, because we're a low-mill-rate town...
Yeah.
We're more likely to get people wanting to register their cars here, rather than in a high-mill-rate town.
Got you.
Do we have that happen?
There was, once, I'd say it's about 20 years ago, maybe, there was a, you know, this was one of the rental car agencies at the airport in Hartford was registering its cars here.
Hmm.
Because the owner lived here.
All of their cars.
Yeah, yeah.
As I mentioned the other day, we have something like...
Should we have to ask them?
We have something like 17,000 cars, or, well, let's take it back, vehicles.
Vehicles, yes.
Vehicles registered here to a town of 21,000, 22,000 people.
It's only like 6,300 households.
That's a lot of cars.
Yeah, it's like three cars a house.
It's crazy.
Mm-hmm.
Four, I shouldn't say.
I'm guilty.
And they're all going to the middlesex middle school to pick up kids.
Or the high school.
Or the high school, yeah. Okay, who's next?
Legal.
Legal, okay. Legal. Not much change here. We are proposing a decrease in the budget for regulatory council, which is the land use agencies, but holding, holding the labor council and the main town council accounts steady.
Okay, and I talked about that before, just to be clear, we ran up a lot of legal expenses just in the acquisition of Great Island, so those legal expenses were capitalized into the transaction cost, and they're not reflected as operating costs here, so.
Yeah, but this is where all your tax appeals, your FOI stuff, all those happy things go.
Kate, when does our contract with Curtis?
End of February.
February 28th.
Of this year?
Yeah. So I actually reached out to Wayne today and asked him to prepare a proposal, and told him that at least the first elect would want to meet with him, but I would assume that you'll all want to have an executive session too.
So your numbers are based on his current rates?
Yes.
Okay.
We are going to have an executive session about that.
Right, it'd be great to. It's a big number. They do a great job, it's a big number.
Probate.
Probate, it's a very small budget. We share the probate court with New Canaan. There are some, percentage-wise, significant jumps in here, but when I looked at the actual expenditures, I felt that they were justified, so I did not cut them.
You know, Kate, I looked at this, and I, I'm trying to figure out, you know, where there's some deficiencies here, and just 23%.
Mm-hmm.
Like, that really jumps out as a very big jump.
It is.
I know it's not a lot of money.
The printing is the biggest part of it. And when I, you know, read their justification and looked at the current numbers...
He wrote that, he wrote, "The significant increase in printing due to increase in Connecticut treasurer's billing, addition of annual microfilm storage charge, and increased use of microfilming services."
And basically, we're obligated to pay what they say their expenses are. And New Canaan pays half of it.
Oh, yes, 50/50.
I mean, this is our share.
Right, okay. But it's 50/50.
Yeah. IT. Yeah, at some point, they started jumping around, they're not actually in order. The biggest part of the IT budget is our contract with the board of education. So we pay all the costs for one member of the staff, and then a percentage of the others. And I think it's been working really well for us.
How do they determine that split again? I forget.
Um, that split has been in place, I mean, George is dedicated to the town, so, I mean, not that they, if they had an emergency, they could call him away, but I don't know how they determined that split. That was done some time ago, and we've never actually changed it.
Do we have the total budget for IT, including Board of Ed, so we can see?
So if we go back to, it should be, I didn't, probably didn't attach it. No, I did not attach it. I do have it, because I have the contract and what it's based on.
It might be worth just taking a look at that.
Yeah.
Just to reconfirm that arrangement.
Yep. I will say, I feel like, especially this year, it was, they were terrific with the website upgrade and making all that change over. It's been very helpful. Town clerk?
Registars.
Oh, come on.
Then you get to do town.
Okay.
Wait, Kate, in IT, what's their capital?
Oh, their capital's $37,515, I think. It is the annual replacement of desktops, and so, let's see, I need to ask them for a little bit of detail. They're replacing computers at the police department, the fire departments, and town hall. So we're on a three-to-four-year replacement cycle, and I know, in particular, New York Heights was looking to have theirs replaced and have put an item in the budget, but those are being replaced out of the $37,000.
So what do we do with the computers that we take out?
Some of them would go to the senior center lab and replace the ones that are there. Some might stay as spares. This budget's a little challenging. We've been trying to do a better job of classifying some of the expenses, as well as addressing the additional needs related to the early voting. So voter registry is the kind of everyday part of it. So when it comes up, the salary will reflect the two, part-time office staff and... and two part-time elected officials.
Because we're all trying to get into this.
Yeah.
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 Just got to get off personally.
Okay, so there are increases because the, the wage increases granting part-timers and the elected officials. Training was that, that's one of the ones that we moved from a different area. It's a little, some of these are a little hard to track because where they had been putting account for things in the past that we felt they weren't, weren't the right place to put them.
That's their mandate, mandatory certification.
Then they have yearly dues to the registrar, the conference, that's all for them now. So the canvassing should go down. I looked at based on their actual, they had asked for a higher amount, but when I looked at their historic actuals, it was, I felt it was a little high. And I think the real big changes we're going to see are in the next section, the election expense. Now, just as a reminder, we budget for known, known elections. So in the fiscal '25 budget, there wouldn't be any primaries that we're aware of at this time. But we have to deal with early voting. So this is, the salary is an increase and some of that is related to, related to the changes in the districts that happened, okay? And then the early voting. And you can just see, you know, some of these things, like professional services. We, where did we move the, is this the coder? The memory card programming? We moved something out of here.
We moved to professional, out of program expense and into professional service. But I don't think it was in. Yeah. Professional service, we moved it into there.
Okay. Yeah, so we've done, we've done a lot of moving around of these things. Overall, the budget is not up, except for that, the personnel, because of the early voting.
So, so a couple of things about this. One of them is that what the registrars, the elected officials requested was supplemental compensation to account for the fact that they're having to spend more time on all this. That's in this budget, correct?
Um, that is in the other budget.
That was the stipend that we cut.
It was the stipend that we cut out.
But that, so in the budget you're presenting, you did cut all that?
I cut out the stipend, yes.
Okay, all right. And then the rest of this is?
If we, if we, if the decision is made to give them a stipend, then we'll transfer it out of the salary contingency line.
Yeah, my general view is that what we ought to do is when we look at setting the salaries for those roles, is that we just take into account all the work that they're doing. And then we say, does that merit a compensation increase or not, other than trying to do a separate stipend? So when would we take up the discussion of their salaries?
This is '24. They run in the eve, they run in the odd years up.
So they're not on the ballot?
This year?
Yeah.
So, yeah, in June, you'll take it.
So they're on the ballot in '24?
Correct. Right, so their next.
They're on the all cycle.
Okay, all right.
So their terms would start in January '25, so this decision.
So in June, we would discuss, so what I, my recommendation is let's, let's discuss that then. And then to Kate's point, if we give them an increase, we'll take it out of salary contingency. It's not a gigantic amount of money in any case. So the stuff that is budgeted here, these are for the supplemental election workers, we would need to.
Well, it's for the, this line here, well, I don't know what I have, look at my computer. That is for the workers at the elections. And that does include additional hours for someone, people to staff the early voting.
Okay. So one of the debates that I've been hearing is whether, is how much the state is going to contribute to supporting some of these expenses, since they were the ones who passed legislation creating the additional, additional work that's going to be associated with supporting the expanded election windows, if you will. So I don't know where they are on all that, in terms of additional funding coming, or whether we would even qualify for some of that. But this budget assumes we would not get any additional funding?
Well, any additional funding would go in as a revenue.
Right.
Should we see the $10,500?
But that would be, it wouldn't impact the expenditure side of it.
Yeah, is any of that budgeted in revenue for these guys?
Uh, no.
Okay. So anyway, the answer is no, we have not budgeted, or we've budgeted no assumptions about receiving state money to offset those costs.
I haven't heard of, they receive $10,500 for this current fiscal year.
They were, yeah, that's, I don't know that we've actually gotten it.
I think some towns have, that's why.
I didn't want into miscellaneous state grants. But remember, we don't treat grants as an offset to the expenses.
Right.
Two line items.
Yep.
That have significant decreases, which is professional services and printing. Can you explain what those are for elections? I gotta go back to that side. Because I don't necessarily see the.
Um, I'm going to go look at, we were moving things around, making, putting them into the proper places. So that's not a cut that I made. So that would have been something that we discussed and felt. Either they didn't ask for it, or it belonged elsewhere. And then the other one, the signage in the ballots. Again, same thing, that's not a cut that I made. That's based on what they asked for, so unless we moved it to another account, that was their request. Yeah, one thing, we did move program expenses was an area where we moved something. We took it out of program expenses and moved it up to professional services.
Yeah, that's the $6,000 for memory cards.
They do have a, we put in a capital request for them for security cameras in the vault. Oh, sorry, not in the vault, in the, they have an office, a storage room down in the basement. And there was an audit done a year or so ago that suggested that we should have some more security there.
Is that where, like, ballots are stored?
Yes, yes. So.
So you've decided on both, a key card to get into the vault as well as security cameras?
I'm asking for both.
She, yeah, she's two different, so this was just for security cameras.
So you're putting two cameras?
Putting cameras in that storage room or on that storage room so that you can see anybody coming or going.
Two.
We don't have a lot of detail on the request, so.
Probably one inside, one outside, no?
Okay, the outside door goes outside, you probably have a camera outside, back parking lot?
There is a camera on the back parking lot, yeah. Okay. Town clerk?
Trying to open, they're just so slow.
There we go.
The spinning wheel.
Mm-hmm.
Screw Kate up.
Doesn't open, I anticipate that it would be tiny.
Right, yeah.
And all those people watching from home, right?
So this department makes money. You can see the.
Are we looking at revenues or expenses?
We're going to look at expenses first. Okay, so full-time salary, Krista and the three clerks. Not anticipating a need for overtime next year. Conferences and meetings is up for the town clerk to attend two conference, two state conferences a year. And.
So is that, is that back to pre-COVID?
Yeah.
Frequenting?
Yeah. Slight reduction in the cost of clerks for the town, for the RTM meetings. A little bit of an increase in the dues. Actually, in general, a lot of the costs here have gone down, so. And that was the request. There is a capital request, well, if we look at the revenues real quick. The bulk of it is the conveyance taxes. There you go. We're going to assume continued strong conveyance tax. I think, I think that's reasonable. And then in the capital budget, there is $6,000 for security upgrades to the vault. There's a section of the vault where certain records are kept and they are kept under lock and key. But the fence that, or the gate that encloses them is older and has been, it's not in the best shape anymore. So we're looking to go to a more secure key fob system and replace the, the gate as well. These are the kind of records that you, you wouldn't even necessarily know if they got stolen. So we need to really keep that, that access limited.
You can't go, going back to expenses on this, what's, why are they dropped off for RTM?
I'm going to assume less time to prepare the minutes. But that all, that all can vary depending on the number of meetings they have and the length of the meetings. You know, that one's kind of variable. Okay. Beautification, beautification. Okay, beautification.
Within community environment?
Yeah. So can you bring up, did they put it all in the detail? They did, okay. They did provide a rather detailed request. And it was a significant increase. I did not fund it all. Okay, I looked at basically trying to keep the increase to 5% or less on them. So some of the things that they added were, or that they wanted to propose were purchasing new flags for the lampposts in town. That was not originally a beautification thing. I took that out. The fall seasonal color to the town hall monuments. I don't believe we should be cutting other things when we're adding pretty flowers. And the fire department garden, yeah, G. Not funding that. And the Earth Day provisions. So that brought their budget down. That was a $13,000 reduction, brought their budget down to 3,4600, which is still a 5% increase over the current year.
But seasonal fall stuff and one or two other things, that's what you cut? You didn't cut town hall or grass mowing or anything like that?
They don't mow the town hall. Public Works does that.
What did I see up there?
Maintaining the town hall flower beds.
Okay.
Left that. And weeding and the mulching on the slope, which is where they put the pollinator pathway.
Yep.
So leaving that, but, you know, I have a hard time cutting some of the other things in the budget that I cut. And, you know, leaving money in there to make town hall beautiful, so.
Yeah, the only thing I want to add is that, for example, under inch, where it says garden maintenance of unsponsored gardens.
That's in there.
You kept that, or?
I kept that. Yeah, I cut the flags. So the flags were 5,000. The fire department garden, another 5,000. $1,000 for the Earth Day. Those were the specific things I cut. And then basically, what I looked at was a cap on the growth.
Okay.
Okay, celebrations, it's also in community environment. So this is celebrations and community grants. The first two lines, program expense and facility repair and maintenance, those are for monuments and ceremonies. The program expense is the expenses for the Memorial Day Parade and facility repair and maintenance. They maintain some of our monuments. So on the, the Memorial Day Parade, they always ask for, they, they talk about money for a band and stuff, and they never spend it. I look at the, well, that's, you know.
What do they spend it on?
Yeah. It's one of those things, like, you know, some of the budgets, I feel like I cut like 100 bucks, right? But when you go back and you look at it, if they're never spending it, that's 100 bucks that can go someplace else, so.
We could add in my costume expenses.
Okay, so they also ask for money to maintain and, maintain the town cemeteries. They asked for an increase of $5,000. And I reduced, I removed the increase.
I would support it. We have gotten grants and things to cover some of that form. We've had the comment, hey, you know, for transfers to do that, I'd support it, creating a budget.
Let's try to say that again, sorry, you mean support adding back the 5,000 that you.
Correct. Because we have gotten some grants.
But that doesn't, so that's on top of this.
Correct. But we've also had some transfers to cover some costs, correct?
Well, okay.
I'm not nickel and diming, I'm just saying we have done some transfers to cover some of the costs.
Yes, but is that because people didn't pay attention to what their budget was and tried to live within it? Or is that because we needed to spend that money?
So that's a you question.
Yeah. And so I cut 5,000. I cut 5,000 for the budget.
Okay.
Okay.
Would it take a $5,000 increase in adding back that in to maintain our cemeteries to the point at which we like?
Well, I think you need to determine what, how you want them maintained. What level, how frequently do you feel they should be mowed? And all the, you know, like the tree branches and stuff picked up, resetting stones, et cetera.
It's a broader question, I talked to somebody the other day. We have 17 cemeteries in town, a lot.
Beautiful.
And, well, they're not all like spring growth.
No, some are smaller, some are larger, yeah. No, some are smaller, some are larger, yeah.
Well, some of them are sad in the sense that they're not maintained.
Yeah, agreed.
And so, I don't know, maybe if we do it now, but we, we ought to get a group together to just, let's take a step back and say, here are all the town cemeteries. Here's pictures of them all as a board of selectmen. What do we want to do about these town cemeteries? Because we own them and we need to, we need to make a decision about that. I get the feeling that for a long time, we just, we've spent money, but I don't know that we've had a holistic plan where we specifically said, this is the standard to which we want to maintain those cemeteries. These will do more, these will do less, but to be purposeful about it. And I don't think we've had a chance to do that.
And we need to decide who's in charge of it. Is it Public Works or is it Monuments and Ceremonies?
Well, we need to...
Right now, we have, it's kind of bifurcated, so.
Does, does monuments do any of the work? Does a committee do any of the work themselves? Any of the, like, man?
I don't know that.
No, for the most part, they hire a landscaping company. Are there any grants that are, that we could apply for that are cost-sharing grants? And we could recapture some of this that you're cutting?
Other than the neglected cemetery grant, I'm not aware of any. And that's not even a cost-sharing grant, that's a outright grant. And then Public Works does, as part of their routine, do some of this work. So, I think it's also important to know who's going to be in charge of it.
Well, we may have split roles. It might be Monuments and Ceremonies that tends to gravestones and fixes them and all that, which feels like it's sort of outside grass mowing that Parks and Rec would do or Public Works would do. And then maybe once the cemetery is maintained to that level and cleaned up, then it's a better candidate for aggressive grass mowing and weeding. I don't know. But to my point earlier, we ought to maybe go off and think about this a little bit. So the question is, in the meantime, do we want to cut that $5,000? Or we want to try to leave that in place to maintain the cemeteries?
Well, I already cut it. You want to, you want to put it back.
Yeah, so are they, with the extra $5,000, are they, are they cutting some more laws that they're not doing now? Or what, like, what is it, like, what's it going to literally buy us?
Well, so here's one of the dangers with...
Well, differently, they add the proposed additional $5,000. What did they say they were going to spend that on?
Well, and that's one of the things that volunteers are terrific, right? But you don't always get as much, you know, they say they'll, they'll refurbish, clean up, repair, remove down tree limbs, leaf removal, grass cutting, broken headstones, remove dead animals, beehives. But, you know...
It's a lot for 5,000.
Well, totally, I want 15, so, you know, what's, what's the actual plan? You know, how much does the grass cutting cost? How much does the tree limb removal cost? And that's one of the things, when you've got volunteers, you're not necessarily going to get the level of detail on how that money would be, you know, what the plan is for the money, so.
The joke is, it is dead animals, they're in the cemetery. My concern for what you were saying, if you give more money and they've been not necessarily adhering to a budget to begin with, does that just mean that they're still going to come back for more? Because they're just gonna have more not adhering to a budget.
That's possible.
We need to have a cemetery meeting.
Yeah, yeah, that's it. Yes, playing together with them. Okay, the next one here is the holiday lights grant. Last year, the chamber did not ask for the money because we'd given them like 35,000 the year before to buy a lot of new equipment. So last year, they said, we're good. This year, they have come back and returned with 8,600. So I have supported that. Music.
I seem to remember that it was a big number because storage was going to be included going forward. So if storage is included and materials have been purchased, what's the increase due to?
Oh, they always have to replace things and, sorry.
Unless they're adding, maybe they're adding.
Chamber grant. So they purchased new materials in 2022, moved from reeds to garlands. This year is the typical material, storage and labor cost. They don't break out... Okay, funds will be used to store and repurchase garland lights for new posts when needed, maintain the garlands and lights, hire to hang up and remove the decorations on the lampposts every year. There's often electrical work that needs to be done. They're anticipating the number of lampposts to increase, the new developments. And then, lights for the trees along Tokenik Road and restring the lights on the post for near the train station. That requires hiring a crew. And if you look in their, their file, they actually break down the, how much is for the installation and maintenance and how much is for the storage. Okay, did that one right? Okay, so... Museum of Darien was next.
We're doubling it this year.
No, we're not.
But the request in the past has always been 20, we've always given them 10?
No, they, well, last year, they requested 20. They got 20 last year.
They did?
Yeah. So they did not request an increase.
Got it.
So level funding there.
I forgot the 20 last year, but...
Yeah, that was an increase.
Yes.
I'm not sure if it was last year or the year before.
I think it must have been last year. Never be at that conversation.
The depot had asked for a significant increase of 86,000, so almost a $30,000 increase. And I didn't feel that we could accommodate that margin increase, so.
What was the justification? Well, it started with, for the program observation, right?
Yeah, no, they wanted to add programs. Let's see, depot. Wish the titles would be better.
Oh, is it definite? Yeah.
Yeah. If you hover over the name, it'll show you the whole name. Okay. Depot. Okay. So they're asking for more... They want to double the amount of middle school programs being offered since last year. Their budget has increased by over $100,000. I don't believe they got real specific on how our specific increase would be used. But I just felt it was, that was a pretty big increase. I mean, ultimately, it's up to you all, but...
I just want to know what it's for. The only thing I can see is that just this, we're asking for 15% of our operating expenses. In the past, we've asked for 12%, so they're just asking. Present each other.
Yeah.
I don't know, but just making note of that, what was the specific aspect of this request? Why, what were they going to spend it on? Just get some more details on that.
But you did approve a 4% increase.
Yeah. Okay. Then we had the Mather Homestead, which was new. We'd not ever had a request from them before. I did not fund it at all. They, they were specific about how they would, how they came up with the number. I'm trying to find it now. But primarily, one of the things, I felt that there's not a municipal purpose that they're serving. So, you know, unlike some of the others, or all of the others, where they serve a municipal purpose, I didn't feel they did. It don't, that doesn't mean that they're not a worthy organization.
What's the story behind the $20,000 and loss and rental income?
Right, that's, I'm trying to find, oh, there it is. I'm sorry, that's...
So that's probably if they wanted to have an event or some issue that...
They had some, yeah, they had some issues with the neighbors. So they are not able to, or they have decided not to rent it out as often.
Yeah, I think, yeah, there's some restrictions put in.
Yeah. So I just didn't feel, you know...
Some of their events bring in a lot of cars.
Cars, yeah. Parking's a little tough there, yeah.
There's no park there.
That lawn, that lawn, green grass. And people are pulling and turning around other people's driveways.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the problem is philosophically, we've not wanted to fund anything. We didn't have what Kate described, which is a direct municipal contact for the Historical Society or the Museum of Darien. They've got ancient historical records that we don't have in town hall. And to the extent that we don't have something, we do actually send citizens to go look for stuff at the Historical Society. So that funding was specifically to help with the management indexing, cataloging, copying...
Of town records.
...of town records at the Museum of Darien. So that's kind of why we're okay with it. But the problem with the Mather Homestead is that it's, to support the list of stuff they're talking about there, which is not directly related to the municipality. And so if we go down that path, it's more about funding a nonprofit, if you will, as opposed to something that has a, where there's a town deficiency that they're actually helping us by doing that because we're not doing it on our own, so.
And if that was your desire...
We could do that.
You could do that. I just think you would want to have policies and guidelines in place before doing that. Because I would also say, once you do that, you are opening the doors.
And, and there's 100 organizations that would qualify for funding with reasons that look just like that.
Of course.
And so I'm, I'm a little reluctant to open that door.
Which is why I had been reluctant to ask at the Museum of Darien.
Right, well, and to your point, we didn't approve it because there was that careful linkage that they don't, that other organizations don't have, so. So I would say I would agree with Kate's cut.
Finally, yeah, one of the things that always impressed me about the Historical Society, aren't they keeping some of the town historic documents?
Yes.
In a joke, hermetically sealed environment so that they don't deteriorate, which I think is a definite town expensive contributing factor. Which has increased over the years, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, they've got a big storage facility. They have a vault. They have all kinds of stuff there to keep all this stuff, so.
The last grant in series, Kids in Crisis. They asked for level funding. And they do serve a need for, well, the name, I think, tells it all.
I support.
Okay.
So Kate, we, we bumped them a couple of years ago.
A couple of years ago, yeah. Yeah, we did. I think it was, might have even been last year.
It was last year.
Yeah.
It used to be like 1,500.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I support it.
Okay.
So you have planning next, but I think we should do Harbor Master over here.
Oh, okay, sorry. Somebody said that to me earlier tonight, too. Was it you?
No.
Maybe it was Linda. Harbor Master, not a big budget. And I cut it in various places because they don't spend it. So the, what I did leave in place was the operating supplies because that is the one area where they regularly do spend the funds.
Kate, we, we have a new Harbor Master, so are these, these cuts?
Did he actually submit the budget or did we just keep last year's budget?
No, we received a response.
Yeah, so this is just the old Harbor Masters budget.
Okay.
Yeah, these are just general operating expenses.
It's like replacing buoys, things like that.
Harbor Masters is an agent of the state.
Yes. They're appointed by the town, but they're an agent of the state.
But they're paid by the state of Connecticut. And so that, none of that is in here. These are just other expenses that he has. I suspect this is fine.
This will be enough?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Alrighty, planning and zoning. Not a big change in this budget. It's a lot in the, well, I think the salary is fairly stable because the majority of his staff is in the town hall union. So these would only reflect steps they were entitled to, but no wage increase until the contracts are settled. There is an increase for training for staff, but also for land use board members, which is required by the state. Clerical, 10% increase there. They have, they have meetings where they have to have, like, a court reporter. So there's not just the cost of that person being there, but then also the transcript. Reducing the budget for digitizing because we've pretty much caught up on all the scanning of the old documents and now everything's digital to start with. And...
That's great.
Yeah, it's interesting, the way it's changed the traffic patterns, the people who don't come in here anymore because they don't have to deliver all the big plans and stuff. And, you know, every once in a while, you hear, "I miss going to town hall." But I think that's one area where it's really been beneficial, not to have that steady stream of people coming in. They can focus their work much better. Little bit of an increase in consulting. For some, a lot of it's GIS mapping, but the other part of it is storm water management, things that we can't do in-house that we send out to consultant to do. There is a capital request associated with this budget. $50,000. This would be a multi-year request, 50 this year, 75 next year, 25 the year after. It's time to do the plan of conservation and development again. So, the last one was in 2016, so this one, it's got to be done every 10 years. So, this would get us started on the process of doing that work.
Wait, so it's, you pay over three years?
It takes a long time to...
Yeah, it takes it, yeah.
It's a long time to actually write, revisit and reconfirm the plan.
Yeah. I mean, you could budget it all now and pay it out over three years, or you can budget it in tranches.
Tranche number two.
How does this relate to what we paid 10 years ago, just at the Curdell City?
I don't know. That was 10 years ago, Jack.
Yeah.
So Kate, it's 15, 15?
They're asking for 50 this year, 75 next year, and 20 the year after. And it would, you know, suggest, when you look at the capital plans, there are the six years out there. And we really tried to emphasize with departments this year, even like sent down a second notice to everybody, think about all those things that are coming in the out years, you know? So do look at the six years. You know, don't just focus on the current year. Look at all six years because it will tell you some of the things that might be coming down the pike.
So they didn't go up to bid on this or anything? They're just, this is just a placeholder?
It's a placeholder, yeah. Who we got next?
Do you want to look at revenue?
Oh, the, okay, yeah, let's, sorry, look at revenue there. It's not a huge amount, but they do, they do take in a decent amount of money for the application fees. So about $200,000.
And it's predicted to be the same even though we have some of the large projects done, or, well?
Those were off, off of planning and zoning several years ago.
Okay.
Because remember, they're the, you know...
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah.
What do you, you know, like a leading indicator.
Right. Got it.
Building would be next?
Yep.
So this is one where actually, I have. This reflects the current staff, but we just, we have a vacancy. And we promoted a person who was in the building department, who was a grade three, to the grade five position. So we already accounted for knowing that the grade five would be replaced at a step one. But, looks like I didn't, oh, yeah. We should be able, we can cut another $7,500 out of this budget, because now we'll be replacing that grade three. She was a step five. We'll be replacing her with a grade three, step one. So we'll be able to cut another $7,500 out of that budget. So we're assuming that the need for overtime will go down. We now have four full-time inspectors. As with planning and zoning, the need for scanning is no longer there, because everything, all the past records were done, and now we're, everything's digitized. So. Don't recall why the cell phones were going down. I think we got a better plan or something.
We eliminated unused devices.
Okay, thank you. The other, generally an unremarkable budget. Unless you want to look at the revenues. Well, they're one of the moneymakers, you know. So we've tried to always be conservative in budgeting the permit revenue, especially for the redevelopments, because this is one of those where if you miss, that's a big miss. But still looking at $2 million in revenue from building permits next year.
Kate, in building, did you cut a car?
Did I cut a car?
Yeah.
In the Capitol?
Yeah.
Yeah. That was, yeah, so during the budget process, when we met with the police department, they are giving us two, so we don't need to buy anyone for planning and zoning.
Oh, great.
What are we doing with the other one?
I leave that to Ed and Brian Transport to determine, you know, sometimes they will take the worst car and get rid of it. But I leave it to them to determine who should get the newest hand-me-down.
Does that increase in building permit revenue, is that kind of consistent with sort of town clerk, another slightly different revenue, but philosophically, you'd expect them to sort of move in tandem? And not having that up here, was it?
No, I wouldn't expect them, I wouldn't expect them to move in tandem. No, because town clerks is all about people selling homes. This is about people building new buildings. So what you really should see, or renovating, yeah. What you really should see is, like, look at the planning permits, planning application fees from a couple of years ago. And then that translates to building permits.
Later.
Later.
But the conveyance fee that the town clerk gets is.
That's strictly about the sale of property.
It's based on the price of the property, which is.
Well, I know, I know they're two different things. I just wondered whether there was a sense that those.
No. Now, because this can be a lot of, like, swimming pools. Or, you know, like, during the pandemic, there was a lot of things, well, there were a lot of swimming pools, but also conversions of space in the house to a home office. People, you know, if you drive down Park Place, you see some of the homes being renovated. So that, you know, doesn't necessarily tie in with the sales.
Human Services.
Thank you. Okay, Human Services is next on our list, and this is one I highlighted previously. They have two part-time employees, admins, and had asked to have it converted to one full-time position, because it would help make their office more efficient to not have the changeover and have to have the discussion every time of, you know, what did somebody else do today? But it's a tremendous increase in cost when you do that. Just, you know, it'd be a union position, the salary cost would go up, and then you add in the benefits. And I just.
What was the increase?
Oh, it was about, let's see. Just the salary would have been 50, almost 57,000.
In addition to the?
Uh, no. No, compared to the 42.
That's what I'm asking, yeah.
Yeah, compared to the 42, but then add in another like 30,000 or so for benefits. Yeah. And I just felt, I couldn't justify it. But I will say, I mean, I think this is, this is one department where, well, let me put it this way. If you look at a number of our departments, like Public Works, Building, Planning and Zoning, each one has two admins, one at a grade five, one at a grade three. This department, it's two departments supported by one full-time admin and two part-time clerks. So, you know, I really think that someday it should happen. They, you know, they, they're busy. It's the Health Department and Human Services, supported by these people. But I, just in the year when everything else was going up.
Well, maybe we take a look at this after we find David's replacement.
Well, I've already built in a reduction in that budget.
All right.
Sorry.
Now, even keeping the two part-time folks and not doing this consolidation, the department's still at 20%. Can we take a closer look at that?
This was one of the departments where there was a significant impact from the compensation study. So the full-time salary, the biggest changes are in the salaries of the assistant director and the director. The part-time salaries were also increased. So this was a significant change from that study. And that's where all of it is.
But the study didn't generate the part-time increase?
Yes, we, but we also, after we had the study for the full-time, we reviewed all of the part-time wages compared to some of our peer towns. And in light of the minimum wage increase, to maintain a certain amount above the minimum wage for these people.
So did all of our part-time, all the part-time people, do you see?
I don't think everybody did, but.
Majority, I would say.
Yeah.
That was HR, right? That wasn't, that never came before the board's letting it?
The transfer did.
Do you want to do outside assistance?
Oh, sorry, yes.
And then senior center?
So the other part of this one is the outside assistance. There's no change in this account. It hasn't been heavily, as heavily hit this year, because there are the ARPA funds available. And we had talked about dropping it down, but then it would need to come back up at some point when the ARPA funds for.
Like food assistance, and that's all built into that.
Yeah.
But I don't know, Kate, if I, I mean, the whole concept was the ARPA funds were a one-time. And so you're, by not dropping it now, you're kind of building it in.
Yeah. That's true.
Well.
It'd be a temporary drop, because.
And it would only be for half the year, because, for these, because they're not contracts or anything. As of December 31st, what's spent is spent. We can't really obligate them just because of the nature of the expenses.
Well, the other thing is, are these expenses the same ones that are being covered by the ARPA funds, right? Because we have, mental health is 250, if I recall, then there's food assistance.
There is.
For 150, and then there's something else.
There is an essential needs.
There is an essential needs section.
There is.
Yes. And that's, you know, things like rent.
Utility assistance.
Yeah. Yeah, so it wouldn't touch the back-to-school program or the late assistance.
And that might be okay, because essential needs are, they may not be recurring for families. In other words, you could spend the money, get somebody back on their feet, and it's, it's okay. In other words, this wouldn't be an enduring sort of level expense. It's a new group of people or a new individual or family that would come in for that kind of assistance, so.
Yeah, this is not like we're paying somebody's rent every month.
Right.
This is, you know, in order to get a phone hookup, you need to clear out an old bill. Or maybe the, you know, the cost of getting something, you know, the security deposit for your rent. These are not ongoing regular payments to individuals. Okay, Senior Center? Senior Center, they are really getting back full steam. So you see, increase in the part-time salary. That is our hope, to hire a second building attendant. We had left that vacant during COVID. We are hopeful, but we found a hard time finding somebody because of the hours, and that it's a part-time.
What are the hours being covered at?
They're afternoon. Don't know the specific hours off the top of my head, but I think it's like 1, 2. It might be like noon to 3.
And no ones are funded?
We've had two applications this time.
What do we need to do to increase? Because we do have some amazing programs, and I think it's important to support these.
You know, it's, hiring part-time is one of the hardest things. So I don't know that we can, that we can increase the number of people. And it's not one that, you know, it's another one, theoretically, we could take the building, the morning one and the afternoon one, and make it one full-time, and I just would rather not do that.
And what's the nature of the work?
Uh, it's setting up the rooms, breaking them down. This, this one would come in at a certain time to assist with the loading up of the dishwasher after the lunch program. So, you know, you might call it light custodial, you know, I mean, they're not cleaning the bathrooms, but they're, they're getting the meeting, the different rooms ready. All right, so.
You're going to make the revenue a percent increase?
Oh, I, well, I was gonna.
Oh, sorry, you're still on expenses, sorry.
Yeah.
But you were like, well, like.
No, we, we have some decreases in the office supplies and uniforms. We've gone to, instead of using a service, gone to buying them and laundering them ourselves. Food is up a little bit.
As it should be. It's for everybody.
Well, and it's, one of the things this includes is the cost of replacement for the chef, when she's on vacation or out sick, and then just the cost increase of food. But generally, the other increases in facility repair and maintenance, you know, some of the equipment's just getting older. And we need to stay on top of that.
Hey Kate.
Yep.
Go back to the, how are they cleaning the uniforms?
Take it home and wash it, right?
Take it home and wash it. Okay, there's also revenue associated with this. So we have the $5 lunch fee. Our goal there is typically to try and cover the cost of the food itself. Program revenue, and we're estimating $3,200 from non-resident memberships, which is something that started last year. And we really haven't gotten any pushback on that.
So are we breaking even at $5?
No. No. For one, because, you know, we would only.
Is food up?
Pardon, 22%? Food's up, yeah. But, you know, the cost, the other costs associated with it, the utensils, the chef.
And that is comfortable keeping it where it is?
The five?
We didn't put it into place last year, right?
No, it's been a little bit longer than that, but.
Oh, I'm thinking of the membership.
The membership was, was new last year.
Yeah, sorry.
You know, it's one of those things, it's a weird number to, you know, five's that nice round number. You know, you know, so, and then when you go up, like, what are you going to go up? If you go to six, well, that's a 20% increase, you know? But I think it's been a while since we've taken a look at it, so. Might be worth seeing. But let me tell you, one of my philosophies around the Senior Center is the residents, the members of the Senior Center, they pay their taxes. They're paying taxes on a house that, you know, maybe used to have several kids going to school. They're paying their taxes, and they're drawing very little in services.
So I'm not suggesting that we should raise that price. I wanted to know what Beth was thinking, that, that's all.
Okay.
Not that Monica wants to double the price of.
No, I have a sweet spot. I'm going to be your last person to say that.
I think we have incredible Senior Center. I'm very grateful.
Yeah, and I'll tell you, it really, it has taken a little bit to get back.
Yeah, it did.
You know. But they really are doing great, you know, the attendance is up and.
No, the activities, the lunches, not just the lunches, the ton of stuff to do, it's great.
Have you seen an increase in the lunches?
Yes, yep. Would it be say 35? They were shooting for, average 35 a day?
Yeah, I like the $5, because once you get more, you can get the $6 plan over at McDonald's or any of the other places. So this is a healthy read.
I don't even think you can get McDonald's for $6 bucks.
And I'll tell you, and, you know, you all want to come volunteer someday for one of the big lunches to serve on it, because it's fun. It's.
It's a happy place.
It is, yeah.
Well, Beth is a happy person.
Absolutely.
Youth and then health, and that's it?
Youth and then health, and that's it? Okay, so youth, the youths. Sorry.
It's a moral, it's a very moral movie line.
Well, it's also, you know, okay, we're going on one day here.
So I think that the bulk of this budget is the summer camp. It's broken into different areas, but if you look at the attachments, Alicia breaks it out, you know, by the programs. But so, part-time salary, this was another area where the permanent part-time people saw an increase. Clerical services, the, the cost for the person who assists with doing the roster for the summer camp, you know, like taking all the kids and arranging them, they're charging more. Program expenses, we're seeing some increases in things that have to go off-site, you know, the bus trips. So there's a slight, slight increase there. But what I will point out to you, if you look at the revenues, basically, they cover the programs. You know, so the town is really picking up the overhead of the staff, the office staff, and the revenues cover the programs.
And that's been true for a long time.
Yes, yes. That's always been the goal there. And then health, you said?
Yeah.
Okay, health. So as you all know, David announced his retirement. So in the full-time salary line, I did build in a turnover amount. And this is, you're seeing here, the first full year for the other sanitarium. So there's a significant increase there in the. So there's a significant increase there in the, in the full-time salary. But we don't need as many part-time hours as we now have that full-time sanitarian onboard. Travel, we might be able to scale that back. That was assuming that the sanitarian would be paid mileage. But with the Park and Rec Director's departure, she had a take-home car. The new Park and Rec Director will not get a take-home car, that will be a pool car with Park and Rec having first priority for it during the day, but available to any other staff member who might need a car. So, and the same thing with the, the help department. They already have two cars assigned to them, so they should be able to, with the three people who use it, work out the use of the town vehicle. So I think we might be able to squeeze some money out of that budget. Conferences and meetings, that covers the director and the assistant director each, I'm sorry, not assistant director, the senior sanitarian each going to a national conference. So, you know, some of those conferences, they change on depending on where we're expecting to be. Dues and licenses is up because we are adding a third person who, who we have to pay dues for. And let's see. And same thing with telephone, adding a third line to be paid for by the town. Actually, no. It's the cell phones and the internet access for the, the tablets so that they can do the inspections remotely. So an increase there. They do have revenue.
Yeah, Kate, why are you, why are you spooling license down?
That's a good question. I would assume it's based on what they're seeing in actuals. It might be, yeah, because they do have. Sometimes they, they have like, you know, repeat offender fees. If they have to come out to you more than once, you know, for failures, for additional texts. But they also, part of that is an estimate of how many new facilities we'll have every year that will require plan reviews. So I think he's anticipating probably fewer than there were last year. And interestingly, anticipating more water supply permits. I think that might be a mistake.
Yeah, that's a big.
Not for.
We need to check that. No, while, while drilling, I'm going to check that because it looks like it could be a mistake.
I think they.
They put it in twice.
Duplicated an itemization.
Let me at least say itemized.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Yeah, that's what it looks like.
So it should be one, one figure?
I think it'll be just one.
One to five thousand.
Five thousand, so still an increase, but a lesser increase. And I don't think. None of those, yeah, there were no, none of those last departments had any capital. That was all that was on the docket.
All right, so my notes from today, even resources, I think we're collectively of a mind to keep the consultant for Kate's higher of twenty-five thousand. We want to look at the math that got the one million estimate for treasurer revenue. So just to see that schedule and how that math was determined. We're going to look at for information technology, just to see the total budget with the Board of Education and the rationale for the split in terms of how to split that. We are going to defer on any decision about some change in compensation on the registrar of voters until we look formally at their salaries in June-ish, whenever that is. We're going to take a look at cemeteries again and have a meeting about that and revisit the five thousand dollars maybe later this week. You're going to change lower grade for the new employee, or new employee for the building department. You said that was going to be a cut of seventy-five hundred bucks. And then the water supply is not ten thousand, it's five thousand.
Yep.
The only other note that I have is to revisit the supplemental motor vehicle tax.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, right, yep.
Just to throw a wrench, is there anything else we want to go over tonight that would reduce tomorrow night, which typically is a much longer, or no? I know, I, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to.
I'm just trying to think who's on tomorrow night.
Well, we've got police, we've got.
Bookwork, I don't know if there's anybody parking a rack, I don't know if there's anything we can do. Well, you could do employee benefits and risk management, those are the only ones you could.
That's what I'm thinking. I don't know how much time that'll.
Yeah, I had my two questions on employee benefits and risk management. Number one, we switched over healthcare for town hall to.
United Healthcare.
United, that's two years ago.
No, last, this current year was our first year with them.
So that was all put out to bid last year. The number you're seeing here is a placeholder sort of pending confirmation on.
Those were the early indication that we had.
Right, maybe that's going to be less, but we don't know.
Yeah, so, and it's based on our experience and, you know, one of the things that happens is we're a small group. And our variances would be, it, it's like throwing a rock in a pond versus throwing it in a lake. You know, in the pond, the rock is going to make bigger ripples than it would make in the lake. So smaller group, a few bad claims have much more of an impact on us than they might in a larger group. So we're going to be more volatile. We are working to get it down and if we need to, we will put it back out to bid.
Yeah, there's only kind of two ways that we could, well, three ways to reduce this. One is you cut back on benefits and we just can't, we really can't do that.
Contractually.
Not for union contracts, we're obligated to pay all that. We could put it out to bid again, as Kate says. The other thing to do is think about how much of this is self-funded. So I've looked at that before, I don't know what's possible in a government context, but the idea is a bigger deductible. So in other words, you say we're going to have the town fund the stuff that we can reasonably predict and that what you pay insurance for is the stuff that is, would be truly catastrophic. And some companies have been able to save money, but it's hard to do that. And it just, it does introduce some more risk for the town, not maybe a ton, because the idea would be, can you carve out the piece that is kind of predictable? In other words, the, the big stuff or the catastrophic stuff goes like this, but there's sort of a baseline of expense that we say, look, we're probably always going to have that. So why pay a premium that would have profits built into it?
Right, right.
So that's the philosophy behind it, it's a lot easier, it's a lot harder to do that than you'd think.
Yeah, and you know, I used to think that we were too small. But our consultants, you know, run a lot of scenarios all the time and they've actually seen that, you know, self-funding could work for us. But, being the conservative Democrat that I am.
We're a conservative Democrat.
I would not want to do it unless we had a commitment to start out with a pot of money that was our cushion against the swings. You know, you need to have a solid foundation, a solid fund balance in the self-insurance fund so that we can withstand the ups and downs of being a smaller group, yeah.
Well, what's the discussion I have with them though, so if we were to self-insure everything, yes, I would agree, you'd need something to save. Someone who has, say, two or three people become catastrophically ill and that could be extraordinarily expensive. The question would be, is it, would a provider come in and provide just catastrophic insurance that would cover kind of those extreme cases at that? And what would that pricing look like so that our risk would only be up to, say, a total claim figure? I'm not sure there's something we could do about it, sort of this cycle, but it might be interesting to get those guys to come back in and just talk about. I mean, clearly, we could self-insure the entire thing, but is there a model where they could provide catastrophic insurance? And there would be a sort of a base load of claims that we would cover? Or claim expense levels that we would cover that would be inherently less risky?
Yeah, that kind of is typically what you would do when you're self-funded. You, you would have stop-loss coverage so that when a claim hits a certain dollar amount, it goes off to a third-party insurer. So, you know, the question is how much exposure do you want to retain? And what the cost of various stop losses are, you know, if you put it at a hundred thousand dollars, it's going to cost you a lot more than if you put it at five hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, what, what is our, what are the chances that we're going to have those, that size of claim? You know, what are our average claim sizes and, you know, where do you set that stop loss?
Not easy to do, but we probably ought to have a conversation.
But there are actuaries who do that kind of stuff, so.
And the problem is, as the actuarial analysis breaks down, the smaller the group is, so we don't know. If we're bigger, to your point, we might have a better.
Yeah, but our, our consultants can give us a very good, because they are, they have actuaries.
Well, and then the, the real potential of this could possibly be if this is a joint sort of Board of Education, town thing, right? Because then you're getting, because it's not just the employees, but it's the total number of insured lives, which include town employees, Board of Ed employees and all family members that are covered with that. So this could be a two or three thousand people in this population, not just.
It makes us go from being the pond to the lake.
Right, so, so if, if we're talking about shared services, if they want to have a discussion about that to say, because they're facing the same numbers we are and the Darien taxpayers are paying that increase as well as this one. So it might be a little quick to get something like done, this done for this budget cycle, but this spring or summer, we ought to have a working group that says, is there value trying to combine both groups? But also to say, is some kind of self-insurance, can you win a stop, stop loss, as you say, is it worth exploring?
I, I think that the Board of Ed has looked at it. I know from listening to them, they, you know, the cycles tend to go up and down whether or not you have some catastrophic issues and not. But right now, for the last couple of years, they have some significant claims.
Yeah.
Really significant claims. You know, they're not specific, but when you listen to the total numbers, how many claims are over a billion dollars, none of the things like that, they're rather significant.
One person gets cancer and that's it.
No, I know.
Yeah.
Well, but then, but the, the question ultimately becomes sort of, if, in a larger population, if you're always going to have a chance, it says every year, it's not them now, it's this person, right? You're always going to have, quote, that million-dollar claim. Okay, for insurance companies, you are paying them a premium to cover that. Insurance companies don't pay health insurance, right? They simply collect premiums and they allow you to spread that cost over and make it a little bit more even, right? So what we're trying to think about with regard to self-insurance is, do we take on some of that sort of leveling, if you will, and sort of save the premium that we're paying to them, which by its nature is going to include profit, coverage for administrative staff, kind of all that stuff. And the bigger the population you get of people, the more likely it is that you can come up with a scheme that actually would result, on average, a lower cost for the town, for the Board of Education.
Now, I know the Board of Ed, because they're in a consortium of other towns, and I know that one of the goals that they're looking for, consistent with that thought process, is they're looking to encourage other towns to join their consortium so they're going out as a block, which also spreads the cost. But if you want to take it not just from the Board of Ed side, is it possible, when you're looking to increase the pool that you have, is there other towns that might be interested in joining everyone together if nothing else on the town side?
So Jeff, do you see, do you see when the schools are going out to other schools to form a group?
They, they already have.
Would they consider including the town side in that?
I, I can't speak to that, I, but I, I know that's one of the things when they were talking, because that healthcare, of course, is one of the drivers of their budget this year. That's one of the things that Rich was talking about and he would have a lot more knowledge on it than I would. But yeah, that's one of the things that they are doing, is looking to expand the room.
Yeah, the more lives you have, the more stable you're going to be.
And the risk is the more predictable.
Yeah, you spread the risk out, yeah.
Let's, yeah, I don't know.
It's a worthwhile.
We're not going to solve that right now, but we ought to, we can, can be in a discussion with those guys. I'll, I'll reach out to Jill and see if we can do that. The second question I had was just on cyber insurance, so if you look at the budget.
Yep.
It was zero for this, this four years, a hundred and something.
Well, no, so we broke all, we broke the insurances out differently than they have been in the past.
So what did?
Wait, are we jumping out of?
We're, sorry, well, I'm sorry, if you want to talk a little more about employee benefits, please, I can make the jump, I was just saying my two questions.
Kate, staying with the, with the medical, where are you in the board? You say you're working through the renewal?
Yes.
Are you, and if this, John's idea is terrific, but assuming that we don't get that in place for this year, are we going to go back up to bid, what do you think?
Uh, waiting for the next piece of information from our consultants to see.
They'll tell us what they recommend.
Yeah. Because they are working with the carrier, trying to get it down.
Will we know this?
You will not, I don't think you will. By, I think by the time the Board of Finance is, we should have a more refined number.
Yeah, we've done that, I mean, remember in the past, we would always refine that number based on what they, what we ended up getting.
And then you have another four weeks afterwards, because we can refine it if we.
And you've done that, and you've done that before, so.
At our, at our meeting as well.
When is the renewal?
July one. So we're dealing with, this is the worst-case situation right now.
I was going to ask you a question about the police pension contributions.
Yes.
If you still want to talk about medical.
No, I think that was it on medical, but yeah, we should talk about that as well.
Those are big jumps.
Yes. Those are the actuarially determined contributions.
Right, based on the.
Based on our.
So it's a five-year smoothing, the way that works, so when we, the way we do actuarially recommended.
Such a hard word to say.
So the first concept of that is for years, so since I've been in government, we have always funded the actuarially recommended contributions, right? And that's just good pension funding practice, and so.
You want to lose your AAA and start, start, you know, not doing that.
So the question is less about whether we're going to pay that, more about how come that number is so high? So the, the way they do this is that it's a kind of a five-year rolling average of those returns. It's not just the returns in one year. So if you have a jump like this, what happens is, is that a good performing year at the front end of that has dropped off, so whether that was five years ago or I haven't looked at all those returns. But that's what's happened and though, so the averages have come out, the average return has dropped off, which meant that actuarially you should have a higher contribution, so that's what's happened. Again, I don't think, that methodology should be changed. It does suggest though that we ought to, the, the only other thing that we can reasonably take a look at is the investment strategy of the pensions themselves. So for a very long time, those have been sixty forty, so sixty percent after these, forty percent bonds and a maximum of sixty bonds or sixty equity, if there have been that one. But we haven't looked at that in an awful long time and I'm not saying we should change that, but there's lots of evidence that says out there that over the long term, even on a risk-adjusted basis, stocks are better, play like period, there's no, there's no question about that.
Well, I think the allocation method that our manager uses would indicate that we should be more in equities, but we have the collar on it.
And, and the reason for that is that if you were doing equities where it was stock picking, I would say, yeah, you probably want a more of a sixty forty split as a risk management matter. But a lot of this stuff is either in extremely stable stocks or they're index funds.
Fixed income is all index funds.
Fixed income's all indexed and then for stocks, I, they do stock picking on that if I'm remembering all that right. But if we wanted to change that trajectory, it's a question of sitting down with the pension boards and saying, I don't know whether it's us or Board of Finance would do that. I think it's Board of Finance. In case, I'll, I'll have a discussion with Jim about it and say, maybe there's a chance to just sit down and take a look, see, if you will. It's not going to, we've got Mr. Henderson here, of course, taking careful notes.
We're about a hundred percent funded right now, so.
No, I don't think we are.
No.
No, we're, we're seventy, eighty percent funded. I don't know, I don't know that our.
Well, it's one of those things that's on the eye of the holder. Well, it's one of those things that's on the eye of the beholder, which, you know, what method are you using, but I don't think we're at 100.
Police pension, we're slightly below 100, and I think the town pension, we're right around 100. The OPEGS are around 70, 80.
Okay, that's what I was remembering, those things, we are not.
He's sweating over there.
Look, it's okay for those things not to be fully, fully, fully funded, simply because there's so much jumping around with these returns and even what we're experiencing right now. It doesn't change, I mean, we were down at 20% funding, oh, that's a problem, right? But historically, where we've been, it's not an issue. But I do think, maybe now's the time, just take a look at the investment strategy that the pension boards have taken with all this. I, I don't think it's changed since I was on those boards and I've been out for six or seven years.
As a recollection, I mean, wasn't it about four years ago that we lowered what we anticipated?
Yes.
To about 6% or something like that, which was like.
Well, no, it was eight, it was 8%, and then we lowered it to, I don't know.
We're down six of the quarter, yeah. We also did a whole, you know, update of assumptions.
Mortality and mortality tables.
The mortality tables. We marked the market one year.
Yeah, and the funny thing is, even though we reduced the rate, the changes on all those other assumptions actually reduced our contribution rather than increasing it like you would have expected.
But I know that what we were anticipating for our investment portfolio was much lower than what actually the state was doing in their own pension calculations. It was very conservative at the time. I'm not getting into the state.
It's a lot better now.
I'm just going to say it again, don't peg us to the state, you know.
But, it was conservative in what we were doing.
Yes, appropriately so.
If anyone wants to hear the actuary's presentation on this, the July 9 pension meeting, the actuary was here and ran through the results for the two pension plans and the two OPEP plans, so it's worthwhile, worthwhile watch.
From July 9?
Uh, January 9.
Oh, okay.
January 9, Board of Finance?
No, January 9 pension meeting.
Pension, okay.
Would you submit, you mentioned remind me of that, or send me a link from that actual.
I think we had. I'll double-check, I'm pretty sure Channel 79 recorded.
Is Kelly Galvin still the chair of that?
Yes.
About somebody who's done something for a thousand years. Thank God, she's very capable. If not, if they don't have that, I'll give her a call, I'd like to talk to her about it. Okay.
You know, other accounts in that area, the accrued leave redemption, that's two pieces. One is the assumption of payouts to longtime employees who have either sick or vacation pay or both, do them at retirement, and the plan that went into place last year for the police department where they can convert sick time to a 457 contribution. We might be able to shave something off the accrued leave redemption. I think our bigger payout is going to be in the current fiscal year. I've looked at who's out there, who has, you know, lots of money, possibly coming to them that might retire in '25, and I think we could probably get away, you know, with cutting some of that.
What sum came?
Oh, the number I'd come up with, and I didn't talk to Jen about it, so. Where is it? The number I came up with was 25,000, which I thought was a moderate risk. Other things, you know, life insurance, LTD going down a little bit, social security, that's just a factor of increases, wages. Professional services, that's a consultant we hired to assist us with managing the defined contribution plan and the deferred comp plans. We don't have anybody taking classes right now, so there's nothing in the employee tuition line. You see the defined contribution increasing, you know, at a higher percentage, but just remember that's as more people go into it, you'll start seeing that go up. And that's that on that. The other one we could talk about is risk management. We did move things around. We had for years used an artificial allocation of our charges from KERMA, breaking it out into different categories. So, you see all the movement around consolidating into two main accounts, liability and property insurance, and then the workers' comp. The other one would be the cyber insurance coverage. Yeah, I mean, that's something we need to go back to them and talk about. We, we have fulfilled their desire for the two-factor authentication on the email, so we might be able to get that down.
Well, I'd kind of like to know what they're covering.
Yeah, what is it?
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Right, so, I mean, it's basically three things. One, it's the cost of data recovery, right? So, if somebody comes in and attacks us and corrupts all this data, the expense that would be required to, say, restore a backup or somehow fix things. Another one could be financial in nature, so somebody comes in and steals a bunch of money. I would have thought that would have been covered by our general insurance for fraud and misuse of funds or that type of thing.
Depends on how the theft was, if it was, the theft was somehow cyber-related, I don't, I'll get you the policy in.
I just have to talk about that. For $100,000, what are we really getting for that? I mean, and it kind of gets back to the problem of my classic question, which is, what problem are we trying to solve, right? So, if we think that we're worried about somebody coming in and planting a virus and corrupts all our data, and what do we do? Is insurance the best way to deal with that, right? Or is it a more robust system to make sure all our stuff is backed up or extra redundant on that? So, if somebody does come after us, and let's say we can't have insurance, but, okay, let's say they, they pay us $10 million. Well, if we don't have robust backup systems, $10 million, $100 million is not going to help. You've got to have some way to go in and access and restore the data. So, I'm not sure, right, okay, so, is buying insurance the best way to accomplish, or the best way to resolve that particular problem or address that particular problem? I just don't know, so, for that kind of money, maybe we could get Jeff or somebody to just come in and chat with us briefly, so, and I'm assuming this is a split cost for the Board of Ed.
No.
So, it's a lot more than $100,000 we're paying there.
No, this is ours.
We pay all of that.
Does the Board of Ed have segment insurance?
I don't know.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, when did he try to pick you back with him?
Yeah, I'd like to talk to Jeff about that.
We, all the insurance does run, well, I don't know if they have cyber insurance, this is, it all runs through the town.
Right.
Because they're a department of the town. But they, where we have known allocations, we do allocate a percentage of the cost to them.
So, I'd like to have a conversation with Jeff about that.
Okay.
Somebody.
I think our insurance agent is who you want to talk to.
Right. Well, if we're talking, if you want to talk about this.
Okay.
Okay.
Where on, what are we getting for that? I'm not sure.
I think it's when Monica sent the email, looking for us to send her five grand when she was in that meeting that one time.
Oh, yeah. I do remember that. I sent her $25,000.
Monica again?
And you'll never see it again. I go, hey, really, I found a grant.
But I'd be happy to look at the policy, I'd be interested to see that as well.
Yeah, thanks, that'd be great. Those are the only questions I had on risk and benefits.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything on that? Jack, nothing?
Just in general, Kate, are our deductibles, is there any way to save on this by increasing our deductibles?
Sure. It's, you know.
That's the self-insurance concept, right?
Yeah, we have decent, decent-sized deductibles on, you know, depends on the coverage. You know, the question is, how much do you save, you know?
The problem is, is you, you raise the deductible a lot and you will save on premiums. The question is, if something happens, right, you got to pay that, and what's the chances of, quote, something happening?
Yeah, what's the risk?
I don't know.
I think that was a conversation that took place one year back, I'm going to say
almost 10 years ago, on what our deductible was on the cause that we had, including the police cause, and then we realized that what happens to police cause keep deductible low.
Yeah.
I remember that.
But then on the general liability policies, you could get that differently.
Yeah.
I always have a self-insured retention.
Well, yeah, and our retention levels vary depending on the coverage, so, or the type of claim. So, you might have one thing for flooding, another thing for crime, another thing for just like wind damage, you know?
When we talk about our brokers for that, do we have a broker that's on retainer, who's agnostic about whether we decide to get insurance or not? Some of the words, would have an unbiased view about, not just whether we have a policy like cyber, but kind of.
Yes.
Point about where you set retention levels and all that to help us optimize that?
Yes, we do, we do. We have a broker and, you know, one thing that is difficult with municipalities is there are not a lot of markets for us. Not a lot of people want to insure municipalities. When it came to cyber, we had a problem because we didn't have the multi-factor authentication on everything. So, they do, they do go out and market things for us as best they can, but, you know, like with our liability, there's really nobody but KERMA for us.
And there's nothing at the state level where they're looking across the towns?
Well, KERMA is a, is actually a cooperative.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at, yeah.
Yeah.
Because that's the only way to save money is to take the 160-something, maybe the state will do something.
And that's pretty much what it is, you know, places.
We're just playing around with retention levels like Mike's, right? But we need to have, and I'm not qualified to look at all that and say, oh, yes, we should make this adjustment because on a risk-adjusted basis, we'll save money or anything. But I'd love to pose that to an expert who's not biased as to the outcome of the decision.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have a favor. Can you send to me the briefing that you sent to the Board of Selecting for distribution? And, and to poor loser.
All right, anything else for the good of the order?
Can I ask you a question? We don't really have on the calendar to look at debt service or contingency. You know, there's not a lot that we can really discuss in that. Are we going to or not really?
Well, I would say debt service is really not a lot you can talk about. Contingency, absolutely, you can talk about, the levels of the contingency.
Yeah, I think we do have that.
It's not on the schedule?
Sorry.
That's okay. I just was curious.
Should have been, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I've got a complete list of departments, won't be missing any.
And, you know, debt service, I don't believe we have anything in there anticipating something new.
We do.
Well, I mean, new, not already authorized, right?
Uh, no, but we have an estimate for the April issue that we have to do, but that needs to get firmed up by the Board of Financing.
And you'll start talking about that in March, right?
Yes.
And then, we put senior transportation in its own budget?
Oh, it usually, it goes with senior center. I totally skipped over that.
It's not huge.
It's.
Is it the drivers or the car?
It's the drivers, and they actually reimburse us for the cost of the drivers. We pay them and then they reimburse us.
Right.
Personally, I would love to be rid of it.
Meaning what?
Well, because they're technically our employees.
Yeah.
We bear the risk of them.
You mean, put it back underneath?
Because what happens is, so we have $44,000 budget for their salaries.
Right.
At Home and Darien will write us a check at the end of the year for that $44,000.
And they don't want to do it because we carry those risks?
I believe it's because of the insurance. I'd be happy, I'd rather give them a grant for the.
Because if it's astronomical for them, I mean, it's a good service for.
Well, we've, we've raised the issue many times and I can raise again.
Sarah, I think, I think in the past it was, excuse, they're a small organization, their insurance is higher than if we pay for it.
I'd rather give them a grant to pay the insurance.
Maybe we can find out exactly what it would be, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so tomorrow is Parks and Rec, Police Public Works, Library. We've already covered benefits and risk management, and maybe we could add some of the protective service, so Fire Marshal, disaster, and all the fire departments are on Wednesday, so.
And I have to check with, Ed needs to go first because he has another meeting.
Okay. All right, well, we'll see what we can get done. I'll just go from there, so.
I appreciate everyone standing a little later tonight.
That's good. Monica had a hard stop, that's good.
No, wait, we, yeah.
Makes it easier.
Makes it easier tomorrow.
Yeah, that's a good hard stop at last minute for the Board of Ed.
What's that?
As we go from here to the Board of Ed.
That's why we're.
The Board of Ed's got a big meeting tomorrow, is that right?
It's their public hearing.
On the budget?
And I believe that Mr. Public will speak. That's why.
Where is their public hearing?
They just listen.
Correct.
No, yeah, they won't speak, right, because, but after, like.
But everyone will speak.
After the public hearing, they're going to go back to work on the.
Yeah.
What time is the public hearing tomorrow?
I believe seven.
And where is it located?
Their meeting.